I hereby call this a meeting of the board of District 200. Board, if you would please call roll.
Mrs. Kike is absent. Mrs. Cracktree?
Here.
Mr. Gabiani?
Here.
Mrs. Inter.
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent. Mr. Paulson? Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Bednar, would you please read this in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome Board of Education, District Administrators and Staff, Parents and Community Members to Edison Middle School. As you know, my name is Rachel Bednar, Principal here, and I'm here tonight with Edison's Assistant Principal, Mrs. Megan Patack. Before you get started on your agenda this evening, I would like to say a quick thank you to our PTA. PTA members, would you please stand? She doesn't want to stand. Michelle Trosick is one of our PTA Presidents and she brought our refreshments this evening, so thank you, Michelle. And I just wanted to say thank you to the PTA in general for all of their help in providing dozens of additional Chromebooks and standing workstations, art supplies, a green screen and so much more, some of which you'll see this evening, which allow us to provide our students with a rich learning experience here at Edison. And now we would like to take a few minutes to share with you some of those rich learning experiences from this year. As you know, across District 200, we have been focused on getting fit. The vision of fit is... "The vision of fit is to create a learning environment which enables learners to access, synthesize and share knowledge while collaborating and creating anytime, anywhere. Experiences are designed to foster critical thinking, parallel real-world situations, and meet individual needs of learners as they develop mastery of standards and skills." This year, our school improvement plan here at Edison is based on two of the seven key areas of the CUSD 200 Learning Environment Reflection Guide: Collaboration and Creation and Standards Mastery. While we continually work on improving every aspect of our school, this year's school improvement plan is focused on two main goals. The first goal is for students to collaborate and create while focusing on communication and social skills needed to interact effectively with others. This goal embeds Social Emotional Goal 32 of Social Awareness and Relationship Skills. At the beginning of the year, teachers met in their PLC teams to write their own grade level and subject area goals to align with our school improvement goals. These goals include their plans to provide as many opportunities for students to collaborate and create as they work toward mastery of standards. Through these PLC conversations, it became clear that we needed to explicitly teach students some skills to help them interact positively in these collaborative conversations. One of the PLC teams came up with these three simple reminders, which they discussed with students prior to their collaborative work. These reminders, "to be an active listener, a positive talker, and a valuable contributor," established the expectations for their positive interactions. This language is now spreading throughout the school, providing students with a consistent message as they move from course to course. Following collaborative work, students are often asked to reflect on their individual and group interactions and set goals for their improvement. The following slides give you just a glimpse into our classrooms where students are collaborating and creating on a regular basis as they work towards standards mastery. Here is a picture of students from early in the year practicing their group problem-solving abilities. They had just a few minutes to build the tallest independently standing structure possible. It's amazing that every single day you can walk into a classroom or you can walk through the halls and you will see students collaborating and creating in every subject there is, every content area, including PE, including health, including our electives as well. This picture here is our fast-paced Language Arts for 6th Grade, and they are collaborating to create webs about poetry for the Tang Dynasty. Here's another Language Arts class. We always like to engage our students here. And what's more fun for students than creating a puppet show to retell a story, which is showing the comprehension that they have of the story that they're learning? In math, they also collaborate finding solutions for different games for the sums of three, as well as writing algebraic expressions. Science is collaboration all the time. I was just in a science classroom yesterday and they were doing what they could to see how they could build a pond of fish and how many would survive and how many not. This picture here is collaborating on design of balloon cars, which I almost got hit with one once when they were doing this in the hallway, actually. This is an investigation, looking at the chemical reactions with heat. And then one that the students really enjoy is creating DNA models using licorice and marshmallows and lots of other yummy food items. We also have simple machines and then using paper towels to see how much strength. And they do have quite a bit marbles on those paper towels there. And this is my personal favorite. I always liked dissection, so I literally have the science teachers coming to my office or texting me saying, "You need to come right now, Megan. We're doing your favorite activity." And I do, and I get in there. The students like it, too. Then, like Rachel said, this is that building the tallest, strongest structure where they had a few minutes to see how they could collaborate and build that and make it sturdy and stay. Social Studies also does collaboration. This picture here shows 1930's radio shows where they had to create them, talk through them like they would at that time, whether it was the detective shows of the 1930's or looking at depression and different things that were going on at the time. Health collaborates with looking at real-world problems and coming up with solutions and talking through problem-solving to look what the best solution is. Also creating posters with important safety issues, which we then do post around the school as well. And Physical Education, they collaborate and create almost every single day as they're doing any type of group sports. And even as they're collaborating to figure out the best way to do their relay races and picking who's going to go first, who's the best for the middle and so forth, and really working on that before they just go out and start running. Yes, Megan said that the collaboration is happening not only in the core subjects, but also in all of our electives. In navigating informational sources, thanks to the PTA, we were just able to acquire a green screen, and so these students here are working on a newscast, obviously having to create the entire thing from beginning to end. In Digital Literacy, one of the projects that has recently been changed, they had to create an original score, but now that Happy Birthday is in the public domain, they have to change that in order to challenge them a little bit, because now it really is okay for them to use it. In 7th Grade Art, we integrate technology quite a bit, and one of the projects is creating a stop-motion animation film, so that's a lot of fun for the students. And another one of their really neat projects is to create these radial prints where they actually make the stamps and have to work together to come up with a theme that they would like to portray throughout the entire print. In Speech, students were working here to identify each other's nervous habits when they're publicly speaking. In Orchestra, you know, I had to ask an orchestra teacher, I'm like, "How much collaboration really do you do? I mean, don't you just play the music? I'm not a musician." And she said, "No, when students are in an ensemble, especially preparing for, you know, IMEA and the different kinds of competitions that they attend, they really do have to collaborate on how they're going to play that piece, what tempo they're going to use, the dynamics, and how those dynamics are going to come through in the piece." So there is quite a bit of collaboration even in the music program. And as you may know, the Entrepreneurship Program has really taken off. Students here are presenting their business models after an entire semester collaborating with their business partner, coming up with a plan, coming up with a marketing plan, a prototype of their product. So just an entire semester-long opportunity to collaborate and then present those business plans to area entrepreneurs who come to visit them at the expo. Performance Seminar is another great 8th Grade elective that allows students to actually write their own one-act play, so they are obviously collaborating and creating that play, and then they get onstage and perform it. What's really cool about this is usually only a couple of the students are really actors at the beginning, you know, kids who've gone out for plays. A lot of them are students who've never done this before, so it gives them an opportunity to get onstage. And then even in our extracurricular activities, obviously tons of collaboration creation going on. This fall, we have the Legend of Sleepy Hollow, and I just could not not put that picture in there because how adorable are those costumes. And this is one of my favorites. You know, here's a picture of a teacher working alongside a brand-new teacher, just figuring out, "How do you do sound and lights for a play?" He had no idea, so he's right in there with the students, figuring it out with them. So a lot of collaboration as teachers are taking risks, trying new things in their classrooms, learning alongside the students with the various technologies. So, as you can see, we've had a lot of opportunities to get fit here at Edison. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to share some of these things with you. In addition to our students collaborating, our teachers also are working very hard to collaborate with one another to provide the best learning experiences for our students. We hope you've enjoyed this quick glimpse into our classrooms and know that lots more collaboration creation will continue as the years go on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bednar. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values for your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input in a variety of venues, which is very helpful. The board must protect its ability and the decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process and the comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board. Please leave your comments for three minutes. Please be factual and curious and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or counter-sentiment to members of the board or staff. If you feel a matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. We have one resident who wishes to address the board. Ms. Paulson?
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Roman? Yes, I'm Lesa Megan-Pittock. Okay. My name is Pamela Paulson of Wheaton. I'm President of New 200, which is the all-volunteer education foundation for our school district. And while I'm here, I wanted to mention we had our first-ever STEM Expo last month at Hubble Mail School. The turnout was great and it sold out, had about 700 attendees. We raised about $5,000, but we did not do it just to raise money. It was more of just to get the awareness of STEM out there to the public and for those that don't know, STEM means science, technology, engineering, and math. We had over 45 exhibitors in groups ranging from companies to robotics teams and a few student groups of the district. So there was no cost for attendees to reserve it, but we had to limit space based on the seating for the cryogenic show that was at the end of it. And we're really excited about it, thrilled that it was such a big hit. We're already organizing our next one, probably November or sometime in the fall, hopefully on a Saturday, so that we can enable more students to attend. Another one of our initiatives is recognizing excellence in teaching in District 200. Therefore, through Monday, we are accepting nominations for the Distinguished Teacher Awards. Any parent, student, faculty, board, community member may nominate a teacher or educator in the district. We have a committee of three former principals that read all the nominations, and then we look forward to recognizing six educators at an award ceremony at Wheaton North on April 26. So the impetus for me to speak tonight was because we formally gifted tonight over $21,000 worth of items that New 200 purchased in the fall during our cycle of teacher grants. We were able to award 16 grants and estimate that these items will benefit at least 650 students for this year alone. And since many of the items are ongoing, it just extrapolates over the years. We've had a really exciting growth over the last 18 months during our revival, and now we have a board of 10 directors, and we're on target to raise $60,000 this school year. And most of that will go back to the schools in the form of teacher grants. And this wouldn't be possible without the support of our corporate and local business sponsors, specifically our premier sponsors, GCA Services Corp., Robin Schwartz Law Firm, North Star Credit Union of Warrenville. And I also want to thank the Board of Education for all their help and time and support as we rebuild the foundation for the benefit of all of our students. Thank you.
Ms. Paulson, as you know, we normally don't respond to public comments, but this is special. The New 200 Foundation is just doing wonderful work. And I think, I know I speak on the ad before, that STEM event of two weeks ago was just outstanding. Saw so much excitement, enthusiasm. If we can generate that all the time, that would be wonderful. We so much appreciate the job that you do and the entire foundation. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Roman.
The next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. I've got just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board tonight under my report, and actually I want to start with an introduction if I can. The board, if you look toward the front of your table, are going to see a couple of boxes that have some really, really wonderful supplies in there. Those are the results of a donation from a student who I'm going to introduce in just a second, Anna Stalik. Anna did a project as part of a Girl Scout project, won, actually won a Gold Award in 2015, and she has gifted this project to District 200. So Anna, I think you're in the second row there. I'm going to introduce you and let you come up if you just want to say anything about the project that we so much appreciate you, one, completing and, two, gifting to the board tonight.
Thank you. So, yes, I'm Anna Stalik. This is part of my Girl Scout Gold Award, which I have officially received. So I made these for traveling presentation kits. I aimed them at 3rd grade classrooms, and I would like to thank Mrs. Delk and Mrs. Moore for their help in guiding me through this project. So I created these projects because I wanted to educate kids about the importance of honeybees in the environment, in our world, and just show them how important they are with pollination. Pollinating our food, they pollinate around one-third of all food we eat. They keep everything green, flowers. And so I wrote a whole lesson plan covering everything from the history of beekeeping, honeybees, the colony functions, the individual functions of the honeybees. And I also included a PowerPoint go-along that's a visual aid for the teachers to use. And the lesson plan guides the teachers through everything they need to know. It's divided into three teaching sessions of about 35, 40 minutes each, which they can do however they want. And I also included two activities, hands-on activities, for the kids to do. So creating their own honeycomb with paper to just see how the structure works, and also the, I made an activity for them to do about making their own little bee out of pom-poms and pipe cleaners, so they can make their own bee, and then draw flowers with cornstarch on it and see how the pollination works so they can understand that that way. So I would now like to officially give these four kids to the school district to use in classrooms, 3rd grade classrooms, or any classroom, any class age, really. So thank you once again for allowing me to do this project.
Anna, thank you. Tremendous project, I got to tell you. Faith, so Ward, I remember from your upcoming calendar, she is slated at the February Committee of the Whole to do an update on the future of instruction and technology fit. Her update is getting easier and easier between the presentation you saw, front-end of tonight by Edison, that again, tremendous example of collaboration creation in a project obviously completed by one of her students. So thank you. Couple of other things that I wanted to share with the board tonight. At your next regularly scheduled meeting in March, that meeting is scheduled at Wheaton Warrenville South. Like we did last year at our March meeting, we do have a recognition that evening, and we'd like to recognize our National Merit finalists from the two high schools. I'd like to invite the board and anybody else planning to attend that meeting to join us actually at 7 o'clock. If you're interested in coming a little bit early, we're going to invite the students and their parents to be there for a little reception like we did last year. So you'll meet the students, obviously, as a part of the meeting itself, but I know that the board always enjoys the opportunity to meet with the students and families directly as well and hear a little bit about their future plans and where they're headed. So again, that's at your next meeting, March meeting at Wheaton Warrenville South. One other thing, kind of an opportunity I wanted to invite the board to a few meetings back. I think we had talked about an opportunity for any board member who's interested to take a tour of the Partners for Success program. That's the program that we use as an alternate program for students that may have been recommended for a specific type of discipline. And so we have a tour opportunity, if you're interested, next Wednesday. That's February the 17th at 10 a.m. If you're interested, let me know. I can get you the address, obviously, of the facility, but worked this morning with Dr. Ramler, the regional office, to at least try to get a tour opportunity. So we'll send you a calendar invite on that as well, but I just wanted to put the date out there tonight. Tomorrow morning, we are working through the Wheaton Chamber of Commerce, not tomorrow morning, I'm sorry, Friday morning, through the Wheaton Chamber of Commerce to host a breakfast. So one of the things at the next Committee of the Whole session, when we're talking about the future of instruction and technology, we're going to be talking to the board more about universal access and what that means. And so universal access is both access to devices for students, to electronic devices for students. It's also, though, access to the Internet, making sure that not only within our buildings, but outside of the buildings, that we partner for opportunities to make sure that all students have access to the Internet. And so we're hosting on Friday morning at the district office a breakfast for some of our community partners to see if there are ways that we can work together with the business community to look for opportunities that we can make connectivity available for our students. So again, Faith and Rod and Eric and I are going to be kind of leading a conversation with that group for about an hour on Friday morning. Again, just as a part of making sure that we try to expand and promote opportunities for students to have access to Internet outside of school if they may not have it at home and need some other opportunities. And then also, I wanted to just remind board and community that next Wednesday, the 17th, at 7 o'clock is also our fourth community engagement session around the master facility plan. So 7 o'clock at Montrose. And certainly, we look forward to a great turnout. And then the last thing that I'll mention, probably not of great surprise, but the Illinois State Board of Education did meet a little bit earlier this week, and one of the items on their agenda was the approval of some of the applications under the Qualified School Construction Bond Program. They did kind of a rank order of all of the applications per the criteria that they had established. And I remember from Bob Lewis's presentation, not a lot of those criteria worked in our favor. We were the 140th district on the list, and they funded the first 19. So we were a little bit away from the funding cutoff on that for the CUSB program, but we certainly made every effort to try to avail the community of that opportunity, but those funds did not go very deep on their list. I think that is it.
Before I read the consent agenda, I'd like to add a point of personal privilege. Anna, you thanked us for the opportunity we gave you to create the curriculum for the honeybees and stuff. I want to thank you for this wonderful gift. I want to thank your parents for all they do for this district and this community. And your older brother, I want to thank him for his participation in our community engagement effort about like a couple of years ago. Your family's done much for us. Thank you. Yeah, why don't you come on up, Anna? We're going to shake your hand.
Anna, thank you so much. Good job.
I'll now read the consent agenda. Item number one, acceptance of gifts from the New 200 Foundation. Two, approval of revised policy 6.60 curriculum content. Three, approval of standards for high school course fit yoga. Four, approval of standards for high school course History of Illinois and Metropolitan Chicago. Five, approval of elementary science materials. Six, approval to dispose of surplus technology assets. Seven, approval of electric market contract rate lock. Eight, approval of bills payable and payable. Nine, approval of minutes, January 13, 2016, open and closed. January 27, 2016, Committee of the Whole. Approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to September 2014 as allowable by law. Ten, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of access of administrative, certified, classified, and non-renewed staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, is there any information you'd like to provide?
I don't believe the subject was included with the act.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Barb?
Just wanted to reiterate, thanks to the New 200 Foundation. They're an amazing, you know, being a board liaison to that group, I have to tell you, they're an amazing group of people with many, many talents, and I know every year they're going to exceed their achievements of the prior year. It's up to a great rejuvenation, thanks to Mrs. Paulson and the people we've been able to bring in. It's, thank you so much. And I know, I have to tell you this, I don't know, is she still here? But I had my teacher group meeting tonight, and every one of them said, "You know what? We should be giving out of every paycheck to the New 200 Foundation, not just once a year." So it's amazing how when you, and they were so thankful for all of the things that the foundation has provided. And they realize that it ties in very nicely with what they do in their classroom every day. So thank you again.
Any other comments or questions? And we'll talk about the New 200 Foundation. Do it enough.
Do it enough. Just really just an observation about one of our agenda items, the curriculum content policy revision. I understand we're making the change because of the new legislation that's passed, but as I scrolled down and saw that the last edit was May of 2002, I couldn't imagine that there's probably some a lot of things that we could put into this besides the technical legally required things. All the conversation about FIT, technology, 21st century teaching and learning. I just throw that out as maybe this is something we should consider to bring this a little bit more up to date than what the recent law required us to do so. 14 years, probably could be updated, but it's just a plot for the future.
Any other comments? Just want to ask a question via email with respect to consent agenda with respect to the electric market contract waitlock. And in response, I've mentioned to Dr. Schuler that I learned more about the electric market than I ever anticipated with my question about the conflict of the city long track with the consent agenda. Is there a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Several.
Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Inteher. Please send it which you call the open.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftrey?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson? I'm sorry, Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Does everybody go down? We have no action items tonight and we now move to oral reports. We have the oral report from annual professional learning community report. Dr. Schuler?
Absolutely. So, Mrs. Dahlquist is getting set up front. So, the oral report tonight, I think is a report that the board is familiar with seeing about this time of year. Several years ago, district made the shift to, I didn't say made the shift, but started to utilize professional learning communities as a means of curriculum improvement, student achievement focus. And so, we're pleased to bring you an update on the report this evening. So, Mrs. Dahlquist is going to run you through a little bit of the history behind FIT as well as some data from an annual survey that we've done from our teachers.
Great. So, you made the call. We're now fourth year into the PLC or Professional Learning Community process. And this is a vehicle that we use for professional development, getting teachers together to talk about what they do and the practices using data to talk about how to improve their own instruction. And then, looking at those students that have already mastered the standard and what do we do to enrich that? And then, what kind of interventions and things we need to do for those students that are struggling with that. And those are kind of the overall goals of what we do with our professional learning field. Takes about five to seven years for a large district to feel that they've gone through this process. And as we have marched through these years, we wanted to have a survey and a way of collecting data on how we're doing on the implementation of that. I spent a lot of time out in classrooms and talking to people as well, but we wanted to have some quantifiable data as well. So, every year, we give out this survey. And this year, we got 756 teachers to complete the survey. So, it's a pretty good turnout on that. And I will be sharing the many of the district results, but each school also gets their own results in comparison to the district so they can kind of see where they are with implementation compared to everybody else at their grade level. And then, of course, you never want to do the survey without sharing the results and having staff think about where they were from last year to this year. So, staff are being shared with their given results between now, and some of them have already done that, and spring break. So, the data, these are the questions that we look at. And this first chart is not nearly as crucial to me as the second chart, but I will go through and talk about this. Norms. Each of these PLC teams, I mean, they're grade level teams, really, these are the people that teach basic physics. They're all people, what defines the PLC is that they teach the same things. And they need to have norms to just how to work with one another. And of course, if you have a new teacher or a new staff member, that all has to be revisited to want to make sure that everybody is involved in that process. And then, you do need to have a process in place for the teachers to figure what happens if the norms are broken and what are they going to do to follow that. And then, they have to get into the work of agreeing on what they're teaching. And that may sound easy, and yet, if you think about really defining and getting in and for math teachers, you'll be able to think about what they teach and what does mastery look like? Is it performance based? Is it application? What are we going to really want of all of the students that are taking that course or grade level curriculum to be? And then, what are we going to do for common formative assessments? And those are those quick checks on how students are doing so that we can monitor instruction and also be able to look and identify those students that are struggling who have already done that. And you can see our percentages. These are just the year levels, so 12, 13, 13, 14, all the way to now, making nice gains. Because I said, it's the second chart that we will want to keep our eye on. Has your PLC used data to change instruction? And that means are you using data from those common formative assessments and looking at that? And our biggest jump this year from 14, 15 to 15, 16 is at the high school level. We now have 66% of our staff that are saying that they've done this process and they've used it to change instruction. And you first got to have standards that you agree on, then you got to have assessments. Then, there's a lot of work that goes into this. Then, the next question is, have you used the data to better meet the needs of those students who didn't meet that standard to begin with? So, are you going back and doing new teaching? Are you sharing with students? What does that look like? Again, some nice gains across elementary, middle, and especially a high school. The last one, we're now working and getting better at what are we doing for those students that already knew the material? What do we do to enrich and use that data and already know ahead of time what needs to happen so that we can provide differentiated and other types of activities? You can see we still have work to do. That's our biggest area that we need to work on, but positive growth. And if you talk to other districts that go through this, that is the last one to really ratchet up and to work on. Then, the bottom question, has the use of PLCs caused increased student learning? And we do ask that in three different ways. We don't say yes or no. We say yes, we say no, and I haven't had enough time to do it yet. I hold those to the highest percentage. That's only those people who solidly could give a yes. So, nice gains at elementary from 61 to 88%. We now have middle that is up to 63% and the high school piece. I also thought that you would be interested in all three parts of that question. So, now you begin to see those people, those percentages of student, I can't talk, let's back up. Those percentage of staff members that said at the elementary, yes, too early to tell 10, no, and the 2%. Middle, what that looks like, and then at the high school level. The high school level, if you remember from the data that I showed you on the charts, they're slower to implement on this, and that's natural as other districts have gone through this with the high school process. But because they're lagging behind in implementing the process, you would expect to have too early to tell percentages be higher on the PLC process. Now, data that I have not been able to share with you before, we are in the process of surveying all the staff again through FIT. And as you know, we're really working on instruction. And we wanted to know from staff what is helping the most. And we have a long list of things that we gave them. Opportunities with staff, a week of learning, faith on card sessions, all of those things that we're trying to do to push this, but we really wanted to know what's the most important. There's one of the long list that had 20% percentage points higher than any other option. Now, all the data is not in, so when I come back in two weeks, say faith will change, but most of the schools have put in, you know, what the number one staff identified for professional development activity is? Time to PLCs. So, as we are working on whether it's collaboration, creation, working on standards mastery, working on the great things that Lee teaches them to do with instructional tech, they're picking up pieces of that and then having time about the standards that they teach, the students they see, and putting those things into practice. So, it was a good reminder of me, of how important staff really use the PLC process. And I don't have that data, but I will have that data for you in a couple of weeks when we go through and look at this. So, I'm excited about this. It does mean that we're continuing to embrace PLCs. We're making progress. It's part of how we do business and it really is proving to be a powerful professional development tool. Questions?
We've got a couple of questions. What's the, can you go to the last slide, please? Thank you, yes. You know, PLCs, I think we had discussions about them, but they seem more fitting for high school because a teacher teaches a single subject, right?
I don't know about more fitting. The elementary teams definitely have more to cover because they're usually private math science.
Right. And I agree with that. So, I guess I'm confused about the percentage of 55 versus, you know, where they are, if you're in the math department, you're teaching math and you're collaborating with math teachers, why that question would be so low from a percentage standpoint?
Sure. So, part of that is the implementation, you know, where are they at with having identified common essential standards? Being able to talk about performance based assessments or whether they're going to do traditional finals, what that piece is going to look like? If you think about kind of the, elementary teachers are used to getting together and saying, okay, what are we going to do for the class project? What are we going to do for the field trip? What are we going to do? And now, let's, you know, let's really, they've already used to approaching and working together on a variety of topics. Middle school and high school, that's a little bit more of a stretch, that I am the teacher of this course and this is how I do this course and I have complete autonomy. That's not just for District 200. That's more of a high school piece of what that would look like. They take really great pride. They are content experts. They are, you know, they have so much expertise. So, to get those people together and really agree on what they're going to teach and how they're going to teach takes a longer time to be able to do that.
Okay, one more question. Related to this, the chart here, I guess, it's how, has the use of PLCs caused increased student learning? Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay, good. You've had this program in place now for four years. Now, this is a survey, right? So, this is their opinion, correct? Do, when will we see the trend data to validate their opinion or their survey, the answer to the survey, if you will? I mean, where is that trend data to say you can truly validate that? Well, the survey says yes, 88% in the elementary think it's improved. Where are we getting the broad numbers to validate that that is a true statement?
Well, as you know, the state of the state assessments, to be able to continue and have trend data has changed at the whole time where we're doing this, these four-year process. Also, many of the standards that we have been teaching, which has also caused a delay in some of these processes because the standards changed for a lot of these people after their first year of actually doing PLCs and they had to revise and think differently about that. We had to create new district assessments to align to the new standards. So, we are beginning to have some trend data, but it's not the same trend data from four years ago because the content of what we teach and the assessments that we use to measure those assessments aren't the same as they were prior to that. So, a lot of this is how are students doing on their learning at the elementary level with standard based report card, how many more of them are reaching those standards? We do not have a systematic across the state assessment tool that we can use definitively to say, well, here's all the growth because it changed at different aspects. I can tell you when I'm out walking classrooms and when we're having to revise some of the curriculum that we do already because students are coming in stronger than they did the year before. That may not be the answer that you're quite looking for. I wish that we had changed assessments and done all of this in the middle of this process as well, but students are improving their learning. It's also difficult to say that whatever student learning happened just because of this. We've also implemented technology. We've been talking about instructional practices. The PLC process is designed to increase student learning, but it's also a vehicle to do all the professional development things that we're doing with everything. So, it's difficult to say that it's just this process.
Thank you.
Just some, just a quick comment as a, I have two high school children. Just some feedback that I'd like to kind of throw out there. Something that I've noticed in the last, in the last couple of years at the high school level, which I applaud them for, are things like students walk in and they know their standards that they're going to be learning. They know that upfront. They get little mini four or five question, you know, assessments that are handed to them. They walk up to a grade cam and the teacher can say right then and there, all right, I'm going to revise my lesson for today. Or, you know what, maybe we'll split and work in two groups and so that we can, maybe we have to do a little remediation or maybe we can enrich here and use these opportunities. So, I'm seeing things now, I think because of some of this collaboration that they're able to have, that it's becoming more natural, like at the elementary level, whereas elementary teachers just for years have already been doing that kind of collaboration. I think we're seeing more of that. So, you know, just something to be able to share that.
Right, definitely. Mr. Bach, the hall boards, you see a lot more exit slips and quick formative assessment that designs the instruction for that day or the next day as they regroup and students even get different types of homework based on how they did on those quick class assessments.
I applaud you for this. I think this is wonderful. I, obviously, it's been a while since my kid was in high school, but I know how instruction, you know, is changing. And I remember seeing, you know, a great difference in how he was taught in high school versus how he was taught in elementary school. You know, elementary school, it was, it was, they were divided into groups and everybody was working at their own pace and the teacher was keeping tabs on it. And then, in high school, it went back to the stage on the stage more, you know, because you are, like you said, with the subject matter, you have your subject matter experts teaching. And I'm encouraged by this to see that you're, sometimes those things that elementary teachers learn can be applied in the high school, but it's not necessarily the natural thing to do, you know, for somebody who's teaching.
There's great things at high school. I don't want to leave this.
No, 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 but I can understand why this is slower on the uptake because you're all focused on your, your subject. And a lot of the, you know, the teaching methods and all of that could kind of get lost because you're so focused on, on your subject. So, I think these are great strides and I think I'm encouraged whether, I mean, I understand, you know, to Mr. Gambiani's point, this isn't hard data, this is how they feel about it. But I'm very, very pleased that the staff feels positive about it because I think if they're positive about it, then it shows that they've been open to it, embracing it, and are willing to say, well, maybe I could learn something from my colleagues. And I think that's what we want to make our education excellent in our district.
Brad?
Yeah. First off, great trend data. I think that's a term we use a lot, trend data, at all the different levels. The one number that really stood out for me, if you go to the last slide, is the 31. And I know, I know you made a little bit of a reference to that. You know, we work in a kind of a industry where we're measured by how many people achieve a certain minimum level. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about across education in general, not our district specifically, about teaching in the middle, or the middle gets lost. And so, this is all about the numbers about meeting the needs of students who didn't meet the standards. That's, that's great, but what are we doing or what can we do at the high school level to make sure that those kids who are, you know, I guess you're smart, smart kids are going to achieve no matter what they do? What is, are the PLCs taking specific actions to, you know, maybe address those students that push them even further so that they don't get lost at the, at the top end of the class?
Sure. And at the high school level, you know, at the elementary level, you have all your third grade students. They're not, they're not leveled. You have all the third grade students. Then, if high school classes, you've already got AP honors, but within the honors class. So, like the honors chemistry teacher is answering this and she's talking about, or he's talking about how do you differentiate even within those groups? So, it's even a finer line of differentiation because we've already got different levels of classes. You've probably heard at the high school level, talking about the advancement in the AP classes and really encouraging other students to be involved in that. I recently did walkthroughs at North and South and people were talking about being really excited about having that opportunity. But I also did witness exit slips where they're like, huh, you know this already. Here's the other, here's an enrichment activity for you to do. Kudos. Or, you knew this already, you only have three math problems for homework tonight. You can do others, but somebody else who needs more practice on that has got different ones to do. So, I am seeing movement in that area of being able to reach those students that are already at the top. I do, I am paying extra attention to our classes that are our I-level classes when I walk and making sure that those things are happening in those classes as well. And we have that collaboration piece and that creation. And I think there is still room for us to do that, but that's on my watch list.
I'll just, you know, say the growth in each individual grade level for the last four years has been, even within that line with the 31, again, it's been tremendous. So, you know, clearly, our teachers are embracing this and implementing and using data to, to impact students. And if I recall, one of our, one of the components of our agreement with the WWEA made that more accessible for students, for teachers.
And I think there is still room for us to do that, um, but that's on my watch list.
I'll just, you know, say the, the growth in each individual grade level for the last four years has been, even, even within that line with the thirty-one, again, it's been tremendous. So, you know, clearly, uh, our teachers are embracing this and implementing and using data to, to impact students. And if I, if I recall, one of our, one of the components of our agreement with the WWEA made that more accessible for students, for teachers at the elementary level. So, uh, some of those things that we've incorporated in there that, you know, never make it into the newspaper, but, um, are, are having a direct impact of the ability of our teachers to do this. So, thank you.
Can I, just real quickly, I want to add one thing on to what Faith said. So, uh, I do believe that the, the structure of PLC and that opportunity for conversation was a big driver behind some of the data that I think is shared with the board not too long ago on that AP equity goals. So again, that, you know, that there, you know, we're still in the course registration process, but collectively between the two high schools, they had conversations with two hundred and fifty students that had never enrolled in an advanced placement opportunity. And again, as a result of, I think, understanding at, at a much deeper level what students are capable of, it really has led to those conversations as well. Now, that's going to be a new challenge again as we get into the differentiation, but, but I'm glad to accept that challenge when you look at that opportunity for, for students, so.
Just an observation for emphasizing that our students need to learn how to collaborate and be creative. It seems incumbent upon us that we encourage our teachers to collaborate as well, so.
Right, the fit learning environment is not just for students. That's the environment we all need, um, to be able to, to learn and to well. So you're exactly right.
Thank you, Faith. Next item on the agenda are written reports. We all received the monthly financial reports as well as a copy of the FOIA request and as well as a copy of the, uh, middle school math parent's night report, um, you know, both in our folders and is an agenda item that circulated last Friday. Next item is the reports from board members and I believe we have a report from the community engagement committee, master facilities plan.
Okay, so the facility committee will report first and there's so much to report that we thought we'd print it out for you. And, uh, Jim and I are going to kind of go back and forth on this as we near the end of the master facility planning process. Uh, we thought, we tried to summarize this in writing and kind of go through some of where we're, where we're heading as a committee and as a process, uh, going forward. So first off, as, as the board knows and probably most of the community knows, one of the key objectives and key focus areas and probably the most complicated focus areas of what we're going to do with Jefferson and our early learning center. So the process has gone through a whole, uh, development of various different criteria to evaluate, uh, the current solution as well as potential solutions to the, uh, Jefferson facility. And we keep referring to Jefferson, but really, I, I think the way this is going about, we're really looking at how we best serve the needs of our pre-K through early childhood program. If you recall in the presentation that, uh, we had back over at Jefferson, our, the program served in five different locations across the district, so the, the options that were being developed are really how to serve the program, not just how to address the needs of Jefferson. So, um, it's pretty comprehensive. So the, the current focus, initial focus in the, in the effort is what is the, um, almost the baseline or the minimum work we can do to renovate and/or expand Jefferson to accomplish as much of the criteria as we can. We, we probably are not going to be able to accomplish everything, but just as an initial baseline, what work would we have to do at that facility to serve the program? How much of the criteria are we able to accomplish and, and let that be kind of an initial baseline to compare other solutions to as we move forward? The committee also, through discussion, identified really a few different ideas, not necessarily options, just ideas about how we could serve that program. Those are some ideas that we're going to sort through as a committee and as a process over the next couple of months. It may include different ways to think about serving the early childhood program. They're not ready for primetime yet, but they're just some things that came to the table through, uh, through some of the conversation that we had the other day.
Yes, as Brad said, we did meet as a committee, uh, last Wednesday on the third. And, um, as you recall, as mentioned this evening, that, uh, the seventeenth of February will be our final community engagement, which will bring closure, uh, at least from a reporting out standpoint of the Perkins Will, um, agreement and engagement that we had. So, uh, on the seventeenth of February, we will have that final community engagement. And just from a timeline, standpoint, um, from that point forward, we will have one final approval that will be required of this phase four of the Perkins Will's agreement. And this will be brought to the board, uh, on the March ninth Board of Ed meeting. The final report will then be presented to the board, uh, on April thirteenth. And the subsequent meeting, uh, following the acceptance of the report, uh, we agree that we have to establish a date and schedule a full-day workshop. Uh, the amount of information here is quite overwhelming when you think about the number of buildings and the work that's been put into this, to this process, uh, on behalf of staff and clearly Perkins Will. So we, as a board, will have a, a full-day workshop to digest this data, analyze this data, prioritize the data as best we can so we can at least have some sense of a guideline and outline on how we can approach and tackle this quite large project and, and opportunity within the district. So those are kind of the timelines as we, as we move forward.
And so that report on, that we receive on April thirteenth is going to be really the facility plan for each individual building that encompasses the, um, physical condition needs, the capital needs list we've had for a while, incorporate some of the, the conversation that we've had and the cost that we're going to see on, on February seventeenth. So we, as a board, are going to take these master plans and have to try to figure out how to implement it. Do we implement the whole thing? Do we implement it in pieces? What are the different scenarios and strategies that we could use to do it in phases? Many, a facility master plan is not a one-time thing. It's something that lays out a series of investments and improvements to all the buildings over a longer period of time. So the board is going to have to, um, work through the process of analyzing different strategies and how those costs tie together. So we discussed as a committee, how do we pull those different ideas apart, how, those different strategies and look at different, different phases of implementation? So the committee is recommending that we issue a request for qualification to a third-party to assist with some cost consulting services. Typically, these would be a, a cost estimating consultant. A construction managers often provide this. And, uh, the thought is that we need a, a much more detailed level of, uh, information and cost projections for the individual scenarios beyond what Perkins and Will is going to provide to us on the seventeenth. So, um, we're going to have to work through several different implementation strategies, talk about timelines, phasing, schedules, how the costs have an impact there. So we think it would be very beneficial to have a, somebody who's not really been involved in the process yet, have a third-party look at this to, as we begin prioritizing these projects. This is very common for other school districts to do. I think there'd be some benefits as we share this information out to our community to know that a, a new third-party has come to the table to put a fresh set of eyes on what the potential cost would be. So, um, you know, unless we hear otherwise from the board, I think that we want to go through, uh, a simple RFQ process to get some proposals to give us the flexibility to move forward over the next, really, four to six months as we, as we bring that entire process to conclusion.
Um, we closed out the meeting that day with, um, identifying, as we do every year, uh, work that has to be done, uh, during the summertime to maintain the buildings and, and upkeep the buildings, uh, as one would expect. As you may or may not know, the, the, uh, the buildings organization here, the, the team has a very, uh, very elaborate plan that identifies in each building priorities over an eight-year period. And this is a living, breathing document that's updated annually and the priorities change clearly, but we have them in a situation where, uh, each year we review that document and, uh, clearly identify those year-one priority-one must-have kind of scenarios that we have to take care of during the summertime. And so, um, that was presented, we discussed it, identified them, and through the good work of the, the folks here, um, have identified about $2.4 million worth of work that has been earmarked and identified for summer. And, uh, through a combination of different funding techniques, we hope to achieve that and get that work done on, on the identified buildings to make sure we're maintaining those buildings, maintaining the safety in those buildings. And so that was the balance of that meeting and that work will begin, uh, if all goes well, in, uh, the beginning of July or thereabouts. So a very, uh, busy, uh, full agenda, if you will, for a facilities planning committee, but a lot of exciting opportunities and challenges at the same time. But, uh, we're focused on it and we're committed to it. So, thank you for your time.
Any questions, uh, for the committee? Mark?
I have a couple. Full-day workshop. Uh, how about we schedule that and then cancel it if we don't need it? Uh, this way we could get everybody together with, you know, when, obviously we have two more members not here tonight. Let's get that scheduled right away so that we make sure we can, can get that going. I'd rather do that than scramble at the last minute. So I would ask that we please go ahead and do that. The other question I have is, you know, you spoke about all the buildings, um, and to me, all the buildings means all of our physical assets. So on that day when we do our, our full workshop, will we be talking about, uh, you know, the SSC and all, will we be talking about woodland, will we be talking about, I mean, all that will come into play, I'm presuming, because that is all part of our physical asset? And, uh, who would be nice that if we could develop a, a plan that includes everything that, that we know we're going to need to touch at some point in time and, you know, over, over the next, for the foreseeable future, I guess, is what I'd like to say, so.
Yeah, I think we definitely had some of those conversations started early, uh, in the meeting and, you know, I think one of the ideas, again, I'm using the term idea, it's not really an option yet, but the ideas about surrounding Jefferson might be helping address some of the non-educational facilities. We mentioned woodland, that's an idea that, that was brought to the table. So I think when we have that conversation as a board at that workshop, that certainly can be covered.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't necessarily want to, want to tie that to any other building. I just think that we need to look at it all. We need to, we need to make sure that we look at everything, whether we tie that to Jefferson or not, but we need to say, this is an asset that we have. Do we need it anymore? Should we, should we keep it? Should we sell it? Should we, whatever? Or where, where do we need, do we need this space? Is it located well? I mean, we just need to have a, a plan that includes everything and even maybe including our transition house, uh, because that's another asset. I mean, we don't own that, but if we, if we're going to continue to rent it, then I think at some point the community should know our intentions or our, our best, uh, judgment as to what we're going to do with all our facilities and when. You know, I, I just think that that would be good to have that out there.
Any other comments, questions?
All right, yeah, procedural question. Is it, uh, should we plan on having as an action item on our March ninth board meeting to go to RFQ or is that something the staff can just go out to RFQ?
Yeah, typically what we would bring to you for approval would be the result of a request for, for proposal. I think even on the master facility plan, the board just made the determination that it's okay for us to submit the request for proposals, but obviously as a board, you'll have to approve the outcome of that process.
Let me comment on that, too. Now that I've mentioned it in public, we're going to be inundated by construction managers and cost estimating consultants coming to our meetings. I'm already getting calls about it. You know, this is a, it's going to be similar to the process that we used for the hiring of Perkins and Will for the, for the planning process. I think the order of magnitude of the investment is going to be substantially less than we're, we're dealing with right now. We can set up a, to be very flexible so that we can hire a firm to do cost consulting services, I guess is the term that I would label on it, but give us the flexibility that should we proceed to implement any aspects of this, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to continue working with that individual company if it's, again, there's, construction managers do this as well as dedicated cost estimating consultants. We can do this request to give us the most flexibility, um, to serve our needs immediately, but also, you know, as we move forward down the road. So I'm very comfortable lending my expertise to that process to make sure that the board as a whole feels comfortable with the outcome.
Jim, Brad, thank you very much for a very thorough report. Appreciate it. Are there any other board committee reports?
Sorry. The community engagement committee met on Monday to basically review, uh, what's going to be presented on the seventeenth and to also kind of discuss where we go from here and, and cost was a very, I found it to be a very good discussion, um, lots of interest, lots of understanding, maybe that people haven't had, you know, in the past. So, um, I would encourage, as Dr. Schuler did, um, people to come to the meeting on the seventeenth. What will be good for those who haven't come in the past is there will be mini presentations of, of kind of all the sessions so that people can ramp up and, um, and see what they might have missed by not being able to attend the prior sessions. So that will be very good. And then there'll be opportunities for people to see some of the detailed plans of the, of, of the schools as well. And also, uh, Dr. Schuler's going to present on financing options that the board has already discussed to just sort of get those out there so that, um, people have an understanding of, you know, what options are available to the district. So, uh, very excited about that and I would encourage all of you to get your friends and neighbors out to, uh, that meeting at the wrong of the seventeenth.
It's kind of heartbroken, broken to hear that the city of Warrenville, the state of Warrenville address is going to be on the evening of the seventeenth as well. I've always enjoyed Dave's presentation. He does an excellent job with the state of, the city of Warrenville address and, um, I hope he's videotaping it so we can see.
Real quick, Jim, what, and I don't know if this falls under here, but I know that we have a board member, I think that's going to each of the, um, citizens advisory committee meetings. I would like a report of some kind, I think, of what they're even, what's being discussed at those meetings possibly, maybe the, I don't know if it's the board member that's attends that meeting, maybe they record at the next meeting or we get some kind of a written report, but I would, I would like to see, I think, some of the information that's being discussed.
Okay, well, that was the last one. Thanks a lot. I would have taken notes. Uh, you know, a lot of what is, was discussed at that meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, uh, you know, uh, it was really a lot around facilities, you know, we've been talking about, about facilities, because people have been to the other sessions and say, "No, it's going on." So, um, I, I can't remember, uh, really, anything more than facilities discussion that might.
No, I think all related to that. We spent a lot of time on Jefferson, actually, with that group. Kind of, uh, went back to just a little bit of the foundation on what does our early learning program look like, both at Jefferson, uh, other facilities. We also spent quite a bit of time on the, the chart with the funding options for the master facility plan with that, that group as well. So, uh, it really was that, um, that as we formed the citizens advisory committee this year, um, in addition to, you know, us suggesting some items that they might want to look at this year, uh, that also came from the group. So it was really at their request that they wanted to spend that meeting talking about the master facility plan in Jefferson and learning a little bit more about it. At their next meeting, I think they've, uh, the topic that, uh, they've identified is , um, kind of innovation in the classroom, fit, technology, so that's going to be the focus at the upcoming meeting. And then, uh, of course, the last meeting will be kind of a, a wrap-up to the year and, and kind of getting that group organized for the, the following year. Um, I, one last thing I'll just mention on the citizens advisory committee is that's co-chaired by two members of the community. So, um, even though, uh, members of the senior leadership team are, you know, are at sessions kind of based on the topic, I'm at all the sessions. It really is facilitated by two members of the community. Stephanie Fanthorpe and Scott Kurth are, are, uh, chairing that committee and, and again, I think doing a great job of facilitating the conversation.
Just, just a clarification from, so we have the citizens advisory committee, which is superintendent's committee, correct? And then we have the community engagement committee, which is a board committee. And there's community, there's members from the former Engage 200 facility and team on that committee. Is that, is that my answer? I know there's on both, but, okay, so, uh, okay. So the community engagement committee is really, is a broader, heavily focused on, on the community engagement goals we have this year in addition to related to the facility planning process we have right now, correct? Okay.
For example, what, what's typically happened at all of these sessions is that Dr. Schuler and the Perkins and Will people. and the Perkins and Will people have kind of gone over what they want to present at the community engagement session and then gotten feedback from the members of the community about maybe what may be missing, what should be maybe presented a little differently, what's too much. So what you've seen, or what you will see on February 17th, for example, that the committee saw on Monday, and then provided some feedback to the staff so that, to the broader community. So that's the function of that team. Citizens Advisory Committee, I believe, will be looked at for just exactly that, advice on how to proceed, you know. And I don't know, at some point, that may need to be a board committee. I don't know. But I think, I think right now, the way we set it up, you know, we set it up the way Dr. Schuler was familiar with handling that before. And I think it's perfectly fine. And I think it, I like the fact that it's being chaired by citizens. But I think we will look to them, maybe as topics come up, we'll look to them to say, how do you think the community will react to this? Or how do you think, you know, here are some options. What are your views on the options? That's how I'm viewing that committee. So there's additional information. We each have our own, we're elected officials, we're here to represent the community, and we represent all those people. But I think to have another set of eyes, so to speak, looking at it and giving us advice from time to time on big issues, I think is, you know, is the function of that committee, as I understood the charter and, you know, all that, what we set it up. So I think the thing that right now they want to look at facilities may be a little bit redundant with the community engagement committee, but I think that's where everybody's mind's at and that's where they, where they should be right now.
No, I think it's all great. I mean, this whole master facility planning process was set up to integrate the community engagement components with it. And that's what, I think, makes this process that we're implementing a little bit different, is it's so kind of finely threaded together. But the point is that we're getting input from the community, not just the people who go to the open houses, but we're getting into different layers of input and review that makes our kind of a voice coming back to us and shaping the process a little bit more broader than those who sign up on February 17th. So I think that's beneficial.
Any other reports?
Go ahead, Mel.
I just wanted to say that I had never been to a teacher group for dinner tonight before coming here. And we always talk about celebrations and they continue to celebrate their technology. So thank you to our technology department. They're very happy with the tools they have to utilize. And obviously, there could always be more, but they feel that they've made some good progress over prior years. So thank you very much.
Topics for future discussion, we'll have an update on the future of instructional technology fit, which we heard tonight, the committee as a whole, and an update on the master technology plan. Announcements, we do have the committee as a whole meeting on February 24th, 7:30 PM at the SSC. And we have community engagement session for February 17th, 2016, 7:00 PM at Monroe Middle School. Our next regular board meeting is March 9th at 7:30 PM at Leighton Warrenville South High School. And do we have any public comments?
No.
So I'll get to read my speech. There being no further action to come before the board, no concession. I ask for a motion on second to adjourn the meeting to closed session for the purpose of discussing employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, according to five ILCS 120 slash two, subpar paragraph seed one. Action suspected following closed session. I have such a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Inteahar.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Inteahar, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Inteahar?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
You are hereby adjourned to closed session.